At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for June 17, 2014, 5:00 PM to order. First item on the agenda is consent agenda items. What's your issues?
Motion to approve them.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
Just a brief comment that our sales taxes went up from 2000. Sales tax collection for the month of March went up about 20,000. Excise tax went up a little bit. Our lodging taxes staying about the same, but actually would probably be an increase because the Holiday Inn is about 30 rooms out right now due to their construction. So we're missing out on some revenue there, but overall it looks well for the last period.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope. Motion carries. Item 2A, consider resolution, city of New Ulm, Minnesota adopting a certain housing program with respect to a project on behalf of HADC, Ridgeway, a Minnesota nonprofit corporation, and approving issuance of bonds to finance a project by the Economic Development Authority of the city of New Ulm, Minnesota.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I can speak to this issue briefly, just so the council has some recognition of what we're doing here. This is the Ridgeway project on German Street and the Ridgeway project on 23rd Street. They were both covered initially under revenue bonds that go back to 1998. Those were refunded at a slightly lower rate in 2006, and that came through the city council, and the council approved those. They're coming back in to refund those bonds once again, as a lot of tax exempt bonds are doing to get lower interest rates in this interest rate environment. So they're seeking the approval to issue these bonds and refund the prior bonds. The three issues that we always look at on these things are whether or not there's any exposure for the city or the Economic Development Authority, and I've been through these bond documents in considerable detail, and there's absolutely no liability on the part of the city. It's all pass-through liability to the borrower. What happens is the EDA issues the bonds, they take the proceeds and then loan them to the Ridgeway operation for their operation. So it's all pass-through liability, nothing on the part of the city. The other issue we look at is whether there's any impediment for our $10 million a year bank qualification limit. I think we're issuing somewhere in the range of $3 million in GO this year. Of this 10 million that they're talking about issuing, 4.2 million is a refinance debt, so it doesn't count against the 10 million bank eligibility, bank qualification limit. So we're going to be well within the limits of the $10 million. And to the extent that for some reason the city may choose, or the Public Utilities Commission may choose, to issue debt that exceeds that $10 million, the developer is obligated to reimburse us for the differential in interest rate that we would have gotten if it had been bank-qualified. So we're protected on that front. And the last issue that we're taking care of, which is sort of a housekeeping one, goes back to the original TIFF, Taxing and Financing District for this project. We funded about $460,000 worth of improvements for this project. A lot of it had to do with the terrible soil down on Ridgefield, German.
German.
And it's a pay-as-you-go project where we've been paying them back from the tax increments over the course of years, and there's an interest rate that's set in that repayment. And the interest rate initially was at the same rate as their 1998 bond issuance. In 2006, we should have, but didn't catch, that they were dropping their interest costs. We should have dropped the interest rate on that TIFF repayment, and we're going to go back and do that retroactively to 2006, and then again drop it down to the new rate here. And that will allow us to fully recapture all the money from the TIFF district. We need to repay that before the 25 years expires. So all of these issues are very standard. We've done this before for this organization, and the concerns that the city would have are well addressed.
And at EDA, we, the first item that you referenced, the fact that the city doesn't bear any responsibility, that was one of the items that was under consideration, and it went through, and that helped the EDA to move ahead on passing.
Yep, very standard.
Yep. Thank you, you.
Yep.
Since this is a public hearing, anybody else like to be heard?
I would note, just for the record, that Paul, absolutely the president of the company, is here if you want to have any questions for him.
Will they have any questions?
You explained it well.
If not, I'd entertain a motion, close the public hearing, and offer resolution.
I'll do that.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, close the public hearing and offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Item 3A, consider a motion approving issuance of general licenses for the period beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See a nun? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope. Motion carries. Item 4A, an oral presentation conducted by Amanda Duer, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities lobbyist, relating to the 2014 legislative session. Go ahead.
Hello, I am Amanda Duer with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I primarily do the transportation lobbying for the coalition, but I'm here just to give a little update on what happened this past legislative session. As you know, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, CGMC, represents 85 cities around the state, and we work in the areas of LGA and property taxes, economic development, annexation of land use, environmental regulation, and transportation. So entering into this session, we came off a last session where there was the large reform in the LGA program and the additional $80 million put into it. And the February forecast showed that there was going to be a $1.2 billion budget surplus for this current biennium, and $2.6 billion for the next biennium. This year was not a budget year, however, they set all their budgets last year, but a traditional bonding year. But at the end of the 2013 session, all the legislative leaders kind of came up with a deal that they would cap the bonding bill at this year at 850 million. So our goals going into the session were a $57 million increase in LGA, and this would return the LGA program to the level it was funded at back in 2002. We also had a series of economic development programs that we were pushing, and then also the coalition as part of the Move Minnesota campaign to pass a statewide transportation Unfortunately, when the preliminary levies came out, it caused quite a stir because there was a 2.1% increase in city levies, and the Dayton administration and a lot of lawmakers kind of had some heartburn over that, because the Department of Revenue was predicting a levy reduction. And so there was a lot of negative spin on the LGA program in the media. So the coalition had to work hard to kind of combat that and put things into perspective. And, you know, we went out there and explained, look, this was the third smallest LGA, or this third smallest levy increase in the past 25 years, and it was less than half of the average increase of the last 10 years. And reminding lawmakers that cities were playing catch-up from years of cuts and unallotments, you know, static staff wages, you know, foregone purchases in major equipment, infrastructure needs. So reminding them that there's a lot of catch-up that needed to be done here. So we had a Star Tribune editorial that the CGMC president, Randy Wilson, the mayor of Glencoe, put in. We had a group of mayors meet with the governor and commissioner Franz and have a sit-down. We sent a letter to all of the legislators, and then individual cities, we asked them to respond to their local legislators and in the media, and I know Mayor Boisman did have a letter in the local paper about that. And this is just a graph that kind of shows this is the levy increase in the past 20 years, and as you can see, indeed, you know, the 2013 to 2014 was small in perspective. So after we kind of calmed everyone down about the levies, we were able to move forward with our request for this $57 million increase for the next year. And we had Representative Simonsen from Duluth and Senator Coonan from Clara City as our authors. And like as I said before, this 57 million would help cities catch up on their infrastructure needs, their capital purchases, and kind of maintain some wages. There wasn't a lot of support from the governor or senate leadership on an increase in LGA, but there was interest on the part of the House. And so what came out of the House in their tax bill was 10.1 million, which would be the annual adjustment for inflation and population growth that we were pushing so hard for last year to be built into the formula. So this would kind of, you know, do the annual adjustment, so we didn't have to go back every year asking for more. The senate tax bill did not include any new LGA funding. They were very opposed to this inflation factor. So the final result that we got was a $7.8 million increase for next year, so not quite what we needed for the inflation adjustment. And then for the next year in 2016, there is 2.5 million increase built in. But obviously, going into the next budget cycle, which will be the next legislative session, we'll be going in with a larger ask, probably to get us to those 2002 levels, depending on what the membership votes on at our upcoming meetings. And this kind of puts New Ulm's LGA into perspective. Like, had last year's law just gone forward with no increase, you would have been expecting 4.226 million, but because of the efforts to get that small increase, you'll get 4.38, so about $12,000 more dollars that you'll be getting in the upcoming year because of that efforts to get that additional LGA funding. And this graph kind of shows how all of the property tax funding was allocated. They did a lot of egg tax credits this year. They did some money for county programming to fight aquatic invasive species, which, you know, that will provide some benefits to the cities, and then some other additional funding for the renters' property tax refund and homeowners' property tax refund program. This year's tax bill also clarified the local government's sales tax exemption that was passed last year. I think there was a lot of confusion in, you know, what applied and what didn't, so they worked to make that clear this year. So HRAs, Port Authorities, and Joint Powers Group, and special taxing districts will be included in this local sales tax exemption, and it'll take effect January of 2016, except for the Metropolitan Council. And that'll provide an estimated savings of $31.5 million for the next biennium for local governments. But this exemption, they made clear, it doesn't apply to inputs for liquor stores, gas or electric utilities, solid waste hauling or recycling, landfills, golf courses, marinas, campgrounds, cafes, or laundromats owned by the cities. So hopefully now, it will be a little bit more clear what applies, because I know the Department of Revenue had some trouble. Another big economic development priority of the coalition and also the Greater Minnesota Partnership, which is chambers, businesses, EDAs, development commissions around the state, was rural broadband development. I know here in New Ulm, you're pretty fortunate to have good broadband coverage, but, you know, a lot of Greater Minnesota isn't so lucky, and it was one of the top issues for economic development identified when these groups reached out. So there was a task force that Governor Dayton appointed a few years ago that had recommended $100 million infrastructure fund to help build up rural broadband. Unfortunately, the governor didn't include that in his budget recommendations for this year, even though it was his own task force that recommended it. So on part of the CGMC and Greater Minnesota Partnership, we were kind of pushing that issue forward, and we had bills authored by Representative Simonsen in Duluth and Senator Schmidt out of Red Wing, and to put the funds in place so that local governments, co-ops, nonprofits, or businesses could work to increase the broadband coverage in these communities. And we did a lot of work in the media throughout Greater Minnesota, and we had more than 18 editorials across the state in support of funding rural broadband development. The news media really caught on that this was an important economic development tool. And so, again, the House took the lead on this, and they passed 25 million for broadband development. And in the end, we were, and the senate had nothing again. But the final result, we were able to get $20 million in the fund, in the supplemental budget this year. And what we have in place for language for this program moving forward is really solid, one of the best in the nation, so they can continue to put funding into this, and it can really have some good results for Greater Minnesota. We also worked on the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program. I know you've used it before here in New Ulm, but it's a deed-administered program funded through the bonding bill that's used to help with infrastructure development, to help attract a new business or build out an industrial park, you know, streets, utilities, water, anything that might be needed to support that business. The fund was basically depleted going into this year, since it'd been a few years since they'd put any bonding funds into it. So the CGMC put in a bill for 25 million. Deed, which administers the program, had asked the governor to put in 10. The governor put in five. The CGMC had to fight tooth and nail to even get 5 million in the House bonding bill, and it wasn't until the second iteration that the Greater Minnesota legislators were able to get an amendment added, because the chair had a lot of resistance to funding a program that was only for economic development in Greater Minnesota. So it was a hard fight. And the senate, they included 4 million in their bonding bill, and then also 4.5 million in cash, which hadn't traditionally been a funding source there, but they had that earmarked for five specific cities, which also had not been done before. And at the end of the day, after all the budget negotiations, it had 4 million in the bonding bill, and then 2.2 million in cash, but not earmarked. So there's 6.2 million available now for cities across the state. The thing is, is that even in my quick survey of city EDAs around the state, I identified more than that worth of projects that are out there. So I'd recommend if you have a project that you need this funding for, to apply quickly, because I have a feeling that these funds are going to get zapped up pretty quickly. Other economic development outcomes, we made some changes to the Angel Investment Fund to make it more usable in Greater Minnesota. So now, half of the funds are going to be set aside for the first nine months of the year, for Greater Minnesota businesses or businesses owned by women and minorities, to try to give them first opportunity to use these funds. And also to help the Greater Minnesota perspective, we expanded the kinds of businesses that are eligible for these investments, to include agribusiness, tourism, and manufacturing, which obviously, out here, there's a lot of agribusiness and manufacturing. So hopefully, it's something that can be more widely used in Greater Minnesota. And we also made some changes to the Greater Minnesota Internship Program and the Greater Minnesota Business Expansion Program, which are two economic development programs that we passed last year, just made some tweaks to them to make them a little bit more usable, like shortening the length of the internship that the students needed to do, and simplifying some requirements that, those were recommendations of the agency. And then transportation, always an up and down there, but CGMC, we, early, one of the early members of the Move Minnesota Coalition, which is a 200-plus organizations of wide background, you know, local governments, engineers, businesses, labor unions, health advocates, transit advocates, highway advocates, you know, just, you know, anyone who really cares about transportation, you know, pushing the legislators to make an investment in a comprehensive transportation bill. I actually serve on the Steering Committee of Move Minnesota on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. So, you know, I thought it was a good opportunity to make sure that there was a good rural perspective in the package that was put forward, and it would have been, you know, the package that we were advocating would have been very good for Greater Minnesota. But it became clear early on that the governor and the House was not really interested in moving forward with a tax increase or a transportation revenue increase in an election year. But I think Move Minnesota was important in the fact that we were able to heighten the issue of transportation and get commitments out of the governor and the House saying that, okay, if we're re-elected next year, this is going to be our top priority. And even, you know, if leadership changes in either of those, I think transportation is very much on everyone's radar, that on a bipartisan basis, leaders have been saying that it needs to be a top issue for next year. So I think we're in a good place there, and buckle up for another. But I think, and I think, you know, part of the success of Move Minnesota was able to say, you know, transportation is a big deal, that it helped increase the amount of money that they put in the bonding bill towards transportation. It's not the same as a long-term, you know, steady investment, but, you know, they did do something. Where the local bridge replacement program, they put 33 million into that. One large bridge was earmarked, so there's about 21.25 million that'll be available for statewide solicitation. They put 54.3 million in for the Local Road Improvement Fund, which is very popular in Greater Minnesota. There'll be about 22.6 million available there for statewide solicitation. They funded Metro Transit at about 15 million. And then the Corridors of Commerce Program, which you guys probably all know about from my work on Highway 14 and my never-ending emails there, we got 31.5 million there, and we were able to get it through a trunk highway fund appropriation, which provides more flexibility than bonding. Bonding, you can't use to buy right-of-way, but a cash appropriation, you can. So on behalf of the Highway 14 Partnership, we're making a push, you know, that some of these funds should be used to acquire right-of-way on Highway 14, so that the still unfinished segments from west of Nicolet to New Ulm, and then the remainder of the Oatana to Dodge Center portion, you know, can be shovel-ready once we do pass a large transportation investment. And I was just speaking to Mindate yesterday afternoon, and they said that it could be before July 1st that they announce how they're going to spend that 31.5 million. So we'll know soon. And then also, Greater Minnesota Transit got some additional cash funding out of the surplus this year. One other thing, we had to play defense on environment this year. There was this rulemaking bill that was proposed mostly by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, that really would have reduced the level of local government participation in the rulemaking process, and provided less scrutiny of rules, like when they compare it to federal and surrounding states, just in effort to streamline, but it really would have cut out cities. So the CGMC, along with the League and Municipal Electrics, businesses, lots of organizations had some real concerns with this, and the CGMC played a pretty crucial role in reaching out to the Greater Minnesota legislators and saying, okay, we need to put the brakes on this. The bill passed the House, but because of the concerns, it was tabled in the senate and didn't become law. So that was a good thing. So kind of our conclusions about the session this year, even though they went into the session saying it's going to be un-session, it's going to be quick, we're just going to take away laws, they ended up doing a lot of really big ambitious proposals, you know, medical marijuana got a lot of attention, minimum wage, the bullying bill, I mean, these were all pretty, you know, high-profile issues. The House was one that had a pretty specific, though modest, focus on rural economic development, and the governor and the senate, you know, just didn't really have a lot of interest in the agenda that we were pushing this year. And between providing tax relief, there was a lot of tax cuts that they passed, and building up the budget reserve, even though we had a $1.2 billion budget surplus, very little of that was actually used on spending, which I can show you here. This graph kind of shows how it was spent. So over 500 million went to tax cuts, you know, those business-to-business and federal conformity, et cetera. And then they put 150 million into the budget reserve, and then they used 200 million to kind of supplement the $850 million bonding bill, things that they could traditionally bond for, they paid cash for. So really, there wasn't a lot of spending in other areas. So kind of our lesson of this year, it was okay from a Greater Minnesota perspective, but it really showed that we have to really fight, communities, businesses, and legislators really have to stand together and fight to get attention, to get our priorities passed. We've got a lot of upcoming events. We have our CGMC Summer Conference, which is going to be in Rochester, August 20 through 22. I think the materials and registration just went out for that. We're going to have a gubernatorial forum there on Thursday, August 21. It's after the primary election, so we'll know who the Republican governor candidate will be. We're co-hosting that with the Rochester Post Bulletin and the Rochester Chamber, so I think it'll be pretty high-profile and get a lot of attention. I believe it's going to be televised, so I think that'll be a really good draw, good event. We're going to also be doing candidate forums, you know, for some of the competitive and open seats throughout Greater Minnesota, just to educate candidates about the issues that are priorities for Greater Minnesota cities. And then also, the CGMC is having our Fall Conference, November 13th and 14th, and we kind of scaled it back this year and are going to be having it in the cities. We also have a new website. It's at the same address, but it's been redesigned, and it is much nicer, and much more user-friendly, I think. I went around New Ulm and was snapping pictures earlier today that hopefully will get loaded, but we have, you know, kind of a scroll of all the member cities of photos, so the New Ulm ones will be up soon, so check it out, greatermncities.org, but it is really nice and a big improvement. So I can take any questions, otherwise, thank you for having me.
Anybody have any questions?
Amanda, what was the basic reason that the senate was so down on so much this year?
I think a lot of it, like, they didn't want to do a lot of spending at all. Like, I think from the get-go, their priority was, you know, we just finally got out of a deficit, you know, I think they wanted to save more. You know, I think they wanted to save more. Like, they weren't even completely on board with all of the tax cuts, you know, that the House and the governor wanted to do. So I think there was just kind of that fundamental disagreement that I think they would have preferred to save more. But I don't know, you know, specifically, you know, to greater Minnesota. I think they just, they didn't know as much about the broadband issue despite our efforts to educate them, that they didn't, you know, have as strong a push for it, but...
Amanda, I know they, this wasn't in your particular agenda, but one of the laws that also passed was an expungement law in the corrections side of things.
Yes.
And the first time, we really finally have a set of rules on when people can apply to have their juvenile record or adult record expunged from the court system. And so I think it will probably increase our city attorney's work, I would think, in this coming year, as far as having to respond to these expungements. And certainly, in my department, I'll have to do that as well. I'm already seeing an increase in that.
We've seen that over the last couple of years.
Yeah, but now there's some set rules as far as how long. And so I think I'm going to, we're going to see dramatic increase in the next few years. And I'm okay with it, I really am. Because I think there's some files that certainly could be expunged, especially in the juvenile world. But I just know that that is going to affect some cities as well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
In the legal department.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Very fine job.
Okay, we'll go on to item 5A, consider resolution approving the lease between the city of New Ulm, Minnesota, and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, to lease a portion of the unheated hangar space at the New Ulm Municipal Airport for the period beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2019, and authorizing the city manager and the finance director to sign the lease agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvann.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5B, consider motion confirming the appointment of Wendy Wingoff to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5C, consider motion confirming the appointment of Shane Wingland to the Public Utilities Commission.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor, a little background on it?
Norman is, has, I believe, finished his project here at Kraft, is moving on to another project, to another craft plant. And Sean is, I don't remember his title right now, right off the top of my head, but he is at Kraft. And it was pushed a little bit by Norman, and agreed on by several other people that sent me letters, that this person would be an excellent person to put on the Public Utilities Commission. So I listened to my input, and he's accepted.
So, thank you. Thanks to Sean and to Wendy for working on these commissions, so...
Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5D, consider motion to authorize overnight camping at Riverside Park on the evening of Thursday, June 19, 2014, for the Wild River Academy of Youth Group attending the first Minnesota River Congress at Turner Hall.
So moved. Doesn't this sound like fun?
Second.
We got a motion in the second, and I hope to go to higher ground.
Right.
Definitely. And, you know, canoe the way the river is today. Wow.
Oh, wow. Good for them.
Yeah, the river might be all underwater, or, oh, park.
No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5E, consider motion to schedule a public hearing for noise variance request to section 8.08, noise ordinance for the purpose of allowing construction activities to occur during the night on the city tower located at the New Ulm Golf Course.
I'll move it.
Second.
The motion's second. Any discussion?
Which motion was?
Oh, the motion to...
To allow?
To allow, to set the public hearing.
To set a public hearing.
Okay. We got a motion in the second to set a, or schedule a public hearing for July 1st, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Would no more business be concluded?
We have...
Oops, sorry.
I move we suspend the rule so we can hear the addendum item.
Second.
We got a motion in the second to suspend rules for the addendum item. And addendum item is a consent, consider a motion authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with wetlands mitigation credits related to the Minnesota Water Access Improvement Project.
We have to vote on the...
Yeah, this, we need to vote on the, on the addendum.
Suspension, on the suspension.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Okay, now item one.
All right.
Yeah, this, in order to keep this project moving along, you know, we didn't want to wait two more weeks. But what this relates to is there's about a quarter acre of land that will be filled in or taken out of wetlands at that site. And the way these things work is that at another location, we can buy the credits that somebody has made a wetland, you know, at cost. And then we can buy and trade those two parcels, basically. So the project, as designed, requires this. If the city council was not to do this, the boat landing project, we'd come to a screeching halt, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't get it. So in order to keep this thing going, we're requesting that we be authorized to sign the purchase agreement for the credits to transfer, in an amount of $5,112. And then also to actually sign the application for this to occur also.
So moved. Second.
And I'm sure Mr. Schmitz would be willing to answer any specific questions.
I do have a question. The small amount of fill is $5,000. That's not a small amount in my world.
No, it's not, it's not...
It's not dirt cheap.
It's not dirt cheap.
It's not a fill, per se. What you're buying is the wetland credits. And if you look, if you look in the application, and also, in the attachment, we can get...
Listed.
To the attachment.
So we're not sure if that's a city expense at this point yet?
Right. At this point, we're, we're going to assume it's our expense, but if we can have it shifted over, because there's leftover money, we will try to obtain that. Basically, it's .15 acres is what, what they're going to disturb, okay, and fill in. And so, if you go through the process, an acre of credit is worth like $20,000. And when you do the math, that the state requires us to do the math, there's nothing we can, there's no argument about this, there's no negotiating, it's the math, and it comes out to roughly $4,800. And then there's a fee on top of that, which all, you know, paperwork is sent up to the state usually has a fee associated with it, which then brings it to the $5,000 amount. And so, it's really kind of cut and dried. And it's nice for us to have that credit available to us, and we didn't have to search too hard, you know, to find somebody who would be willing to do this for us.
Making wetlands.
If you remember, and go back far enough, Roar Malt did basically the same thing down at Gistleson, down on the river bottom. They planted lots of trees. And they did that because they needed the credits to offset some things that were happening in Shakopee. Okay? And so, these trading things happen all the time, and it just happens to be that we need .15 acres of disruption in our wetlands for this particular project. And we hope to get it back, and we'll, we'll be talking with the DNR on this.
Well, that park is used a lot by a lot of, a lot of folks in our community. So I support it.
Yeah. On the plus side, if that's all we had to stick into the project, $5,000 on a $240,000 project, that's, that's pretty good payback.
Pretty bad, yeah.
Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries.
Aye.
Now, no more business be concluded.
No more business.
Meeting adjourned.
Yes, thank you.